Warden, Warden and councillors, good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to address you. I believe most people in the county would agree that a healthy environment is vital to our community. Here I respectfully make some suggestions of how we can best achieve this. I will present new scientific information from three world experts: Dr Paul Connott of the US, Dr Vivian Howard of the UK, and Dr Kerry Rowe of Queen's University in Kingston. But first, here is my overview. It shows eight statements that many citizens consider to be self-evident truths about the environment, waste management, and public health. First, climate change is the single major environmental issue threatening the world today. Second, government rules and regulations ensure protection of the health of the citizens. Third, an example is the government of Ontario Ministry of Environment and Climate Change, which we abbreviate to MOECC, new Bill 151 with its promise of building the circular economy. Another example is how the ban on coal-fired power plants clean up the environment. Five, we need to divert from landfill since it is a dangerous threat to our environment. Six, with diversion to energy from waste, we can recycle, generate energy, and dispose of residual waste. Seven, Scandinavians incinerate and they are very advanced in technology. We can safely follow their lead. And eight, government standards ensure that the risk of cancer from incinerated emissions is only one in a million, or basically zero. Unfortunately, as I will explain, none of these so-called self-evident truths is in fact true. Let's look at each of these in turn. First, climate change is the single major environmental issue threatening the world today. Climate change is a real environmental threat, but we have another human disaster which I consider to be even more urgent than climate change. We are in a worldwide cancer pandemic and it is largely caused by pollution of our environment. I will return to this shortly, but first, which is of greater concern, flooding of New York City in 50 years' time, or your loved ones or you getting cancer right now? Item two of this, government rules and regulations ensure protection of the health of citizens. Polluters always say they are complying with government regulations, but compliance does not ensure public safety. For example, CEREX, the world's major cause of preventable death, comply with government regulations. Specifically regarding air pollution, the MOECC does not set limits. It issues so-called standards for only about 20 emissions, whereas incinerators emit hundreds of deadly toxins. And incinerator companies are not ordered to comply, they are asked to do the best they can. Government standards are meaningless, there is no safe amount of carcinogen or cancer-causing poison. And bioaccumulation, which is the concentration of these toxins in our food chain, amplifies this. As we speak, the air in this council chamber and everywhere in this community is being polluted with government approval by invisible deadly emissions from the Clarendon and St Mary's cement plant and incinerators. Dr Connott is a world expert in waste management and a pioneer of the science of bioaccumulation of poisons from the air in vegetation and from there into livestock and into our food. Dr Connott states that the food chain is the major root for human poisoning by incinerator carcinogens. An example is the dioxin called the most deadly poison to humans, the main source of which is incinerators. Dr Connott states exposure by a cow's milk to dioxin is 200 times greater than exposure directly through inhalation. So even strict air standards would not protect against incinerator poisons. There are no safe levels and, as Dr Connott says, air standards ignore the continuous accumulations in the food chain. I will save till last in this presentation the disturbing truth about the mathematical basis of these so-called government air standards, but for now, the air standards problems lead back to the cancer issue. In 1991, it was thought that lifetime expectancy of cancer was about one in 10,000. It was estimated that about 1 to 2% of those cancers might be due to pollution. Now in 2016, the United States National Cancer Institute states that lifetime cancer expectancy for men is one in two, and for women, one in three. And in January of this year, an article in the Journal Nature showed that up to 90% of cancer is due to extrinsic factors or environmental pollution. The shift from one in 10,000 to one in two or three, and from 1 to 2% to 90%, in just 25 years, is certainly an environmental disaster more than just comparable to climate change. Item three, an example of government regulations protecting our health is the MOECC Bill 151 with its promise of building the circular economy. The term circular economy refers to the circulation of materials through recycling with preservation of commodities and non-renewable natural resources. This deserves high praise. Unfortunately though, the bill proposes a circular economy based on recycling in parallel with the burning in so-called energy from waste incinerators of the very same commodities and non-renewable natural resources that are to be recycled. As Dr Connott states, so-called energy from waste incineration requires materials that could otherwise be recycled in order to maintain temperatures. Incineration renders recycling impossible. Invaluable resources simply and literally go up in smoke. One cannot both burn and recycle the same materials. It is at war. Incineration is incompatible with the circular economy. Item four, another example of government regulations protecting our health is how the ban on coal-fired power plants cleaned up the environment. Ontario's ban on coal-fired energy plants is commendable, but as indicated by Dr Vivian Howard, a worse scourge remains. Dr Vivian Howard is an international expert on effects of toxic substances on human health, including the deadly effects of nanoparticles, which are particles one millionth the size of a pinhead. He is consultant to the European Parliament and the World Health Organisation. Dr Howard states, studies have reported associations between living close to incinerators and developing, for example, primary liver cancer, laryngeal cancer, soft tissue sarcoma, lung cancer, and much more. Comparing incinerators to coal plants, Dr Howard says, incineration produces very large amounts of greenhouse gases. In addition, Dr Howard emphasizes, incineration emits more pollution per unit energy than do coal gas plants. Incinerators produce a much larger number of carcinogens, including the deadly dioxins and furiums, which are virtually unique to incinerators. And incinerators produce vast amounts of the unfiltered and deadly nanoparticles. We got rid of coal-fired plants. Incinerators are much worse polluters. They should be fired too. Item five, we need to divert from landfill since it is a dangerous threat to our environment. Bill 151 makes diversion a priority, which is excellent if the diversion is to recycling. But there is at this time still a small residual that cannot be recycled, and contrary to the statement on the screen, that residual material can be safely dealt with by landfill. The idea that material which cannot be recycled has to be incinerated, and that landfill must be avoided at all costs, is misinformation planted in the public mind by the incinerator industry. I recently consulted Dr Kerry Rowe, a world authority on various systems for landfill. Dr Rowe is Canada Research Chair in Geotechnical and Georegional Engineering. He is the lead author of the book, Barrier Systems for Waste Disposal Facilities, and much more. Dr Rowe states that using modern technology, landfills are entirely safe and simply do not leak, in contrast to incinerators, which as mentioned, release hundreds of toxins. Of about 30 correctly barrier-lined landfills in Ontario and far larger numbers in Australia and in the USA, Dr Rowe knows of none that have leaked. However, there is one exception. Incinerators do not replace landfill. Incinerator ash has to go to landfill, but incinerator ash is far more toxic than any other landfill waste and requires extra barrier lining. This entails extra expense and is therefore rarely provided, so usually the highly toxic ash leaks out. Item six, with diversion to energy from waste, we can recycle, generate energy, and dispose of residual waste. The idea that burning waste can produce useful energy is another unfortunate deception made popular by the incineration industry. Dr Connott points out that the net energy balance of so-called energy from waste incinerators is strongly negative. About four times as much energy is conserved by reuse, recycling, and composting as is produced by energy from waste incineration, says Dr Connott. Item seven, Scandinavians incinerate and they are very advanced in technology. We can safely follow their lead. Yes, Scandinavia has this reputation, and amongst them especially, the Danes. In 2012, then Danish Minister of Environment Ida Alkon proudly declared that Denmark was the world champions of waste incineration. In the same year, Denmark was found to be world champions in something else. Denmark was found to have the highest rate of cancer in the world. This slide shows Denmark at the top of the cancer list on the left, with Norway, another Scandinavian country, up there just a few steps down the list, and with the lowest rates of cancer on the right, Niger right at the top, and with other less industrialised African and Asian countries in that list. This illustrates the link of the worldwide pollution problem with the worldwide cancer epidemic. I'm sure you all know the famous line from Shakespeare's Hamlet, "Something is rotten in the state of Denmark." Shakespeare was, of course, referring to incineration. The following year, 2013, a front page headline in the Danish National Daily Newsweek, Politica, read, "Denmark to retreat as incineration champion," with the subheading, "Environment Minister Ida Alkon announces a change in the nation's priority from incineration to recycling." "In Denmark, we have been incinerating almost 80% of our household waste," said Alkon. "Materials and resources have been lost which could otherwise have been recycled. Now, we are going to change this." And the article in Politica concluded, "Welcome to the 21st century, Denmark." So now, it would indeed be a good idea to follow the lead of the Danes. And the final item on my list, government standards ensure that risk of cancer from incinerated emissions is only one in a million, or basically zero. I have discussed some of the numerous scientific flaws in the use of air standards. I promised earlier I would save for last the intriguing story of their mathematical basis. Here is how the one-in-a-million mantra became accepted wisdom. In 1961, Nathan Mantell and Ray Brown, working on safety testing of carcinogens, declared a one in 100 million to be what they call a permissible risk level. In the 1990s, the mantra that cancer is from incinerator poisons was one in a million became common, and Dr Catherine P Kelly went in search of an explanation of where the one-in-a-million rule had come from. In an article titled "The One-In-A-Million Myth," she reported, "None of the officials contacted at any federal or state agency currently using one-in-a-million as a criterion knew the basis of this criterion, nor is there any readily available documentation that specifically describes the origin of one-in-a-million." Dr Kelly then learned that in 1997, the US Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA, had used the Nathan and Mantell paper that I mentioned to declare what they called an essentially zero-risk level that would not need to be regulated. However, to protect their budget, they changed the figure from one in 100 million to one in one million. Puzzled by this, Dr Kelly contacted Dr Nathan Mantell himself and asked how he originally determined the safe number to be one in 100 million. Now here comes the exotic explanation of this complex mathematical formula beloved by governments worldwide. Mantell replied, "We just pulled it out of the hat." I mentioned earlier that government air standards are meaningless, and this is the so-called scientific and mathematical basis on which they are derived. In other words, government air standards have no scientific basis at all. In summary, Warden and councillors, the arguments for incineration as part of waste management are at best ridiculous historical remnants, and at worst outrageous misinformation planted by the incinerator industry. In using your best judgment to ensure the future health of our community, I respectfully urge you to reject propaganda, follow medical science, and support the circular economy. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Dr Bletcher, for a very informative presentation. Having read and listened to your presentation, what I'm going to do is, before I open up the council for comments or questions, I'm going to make a recommendation of, I think, your information, where your information can have the most impact in the long-term management master plan that we're pursuing in the County of Northumberland. And that would be through the environmental assessment process. If you give your information or your contact information to the county, when we start the environmental assessment process in 2017, we'll make sure you get on their agenda and you can present this information to them, and it will go on the record and it will be evaluated as such through the environmental assessment process. For county council to support or oppose any particular form of waste management at this point, we put the environmental assessment process in jeopardy, and we don't want to do that. We want to make sure the environmental assessment process is very clean and hopes at all options, and we'll certainly take your information into consideration. So that's what I'm suggesting you do, leave your information, we'll make sure to get on their agenda. And now I'm going to hold out to members of council who may have comments or questions. Councillor Sanderson.
Excellent presentation. As everybody knows, Portobello's been very proactive in this area and has circulated a resolution throughout Ontario looking for support against incineration as an option. This was presented to county council and basically taken for information. I do have a question though regarding some of the comments about incineration being an option and supported by the public. I think in a StanTech report this came up. Could you comment on this conflicting information?
I have been aware of this. I had tracked down this static report on the web. It's a substantial report which contains a lot of vulnerable information, except with respect to its opinion pool, which is basically totally fraught with error. In fact, it breaks every statistical rule in the book, starting with it's not a random sample, and the sample is far too small to draw any conclusions from. But the worst problem by far, I'll get to straight away, is the way the question is formulated. The question that I saw on the web was formulated as a so-called omnibus question, which contained various possibilities, and you're asked, are the people responding asked to reply yes or no? That's like asking people, would you like chocolate cake or apple pie this evening for dessert, yes or no? And if you say yes, then that's counted as a yes for chocolate pie. The question said, if I remember correctly, do you support alternative disposal facilities? So already there is an implication that it's an alternative to something that has to be discarded, and that's presumed to be landfill, which as I've explained, should not be discarded. And then the question goes on to say EG, which means open to infinity, so EG could include anything, including recycling. So people saying yes might have been saying yes to recycling. And then even worse, it contains an implied false premise, because it says EG, energy from waste incinerators, certainly energy from waste facilities that are not incinerators, implying there is such a thing, but there is no such thing. And thirdly, a third option, which I think was digesters. All energy from waste facilities are incinerators, whether they go by fancy names like pyrolysis or plasma arc or gasification, these are all incinerators masquerading under the name of science as if it's cutting-edge research. They are all incinerators, and giving the impression to the people answering this question that there was, that there is something that is not an incinerator, gives the false impression that if you say yes, you're saying something, yes, something that could be keen and harmful environment. So in brief, I'm sorry I went long and long on this, but this is such a badly formulated survey, it was totally misleading and no conclusions can be drawn from it.
Next councillor Walles.
Good morning, Mr Bletcher, and thank you.
Pleasure.
Doctor Bletcher, and thank you very much for your presentation. I think it's unique that you're presenting today, the day before birthday, recognised around the world, and actually it also coincides with the county cleanup, which is waste as well. I'm interested a little bit more about the discussion about smoke stacks in Clarendon, and ice cream is going up way higher in the air, the stacks are higher and higher. And I think, please correct me if I'm wrong, by putting them higher, you're just brading that carbon dioxide engines or whatever further and further away from the original spot. Is that kind of correct, or would you like to comment on that?
This is correct. If you carefully hear the Clarendon incinerators go by, you'll notice that there's a plume, a visible plume, which is clearly moving towards this direction, westward. The visible part by far is not the most dangerous. The visible part is disturbing and also is very harmful, but it contains the invisible particles, which are the most dangerous, and many most of the carcinogens are invisible. Recently, Mayor Sanderson of Portobello made a presentation to the Durham Regional Council about this issue and expressed Portobello's concerns that we in Portobello and Cogburn and everyone west of the Clarendon incinerator are being exposed to the carcinogens that count on their stack, and he was confronted with skepticism with some of the questions that he received, implying that it was not clear that the westward, that the wind really has a westward direction. So following this, I had some discussions with my good friend and colleague, Joe Schmeys, who did an incredibly thorough study, tracked down information from all the meteorological stations between Toronto Island and Kingston, I believe, tracked down the detailed information and confirmed, and produced an absolutely beautiful report confirming with 100% certainty that the predominant westward direction, predominant direction of the wind is westward. So we are where we sit now, receiving these deadly poisons. You can't see them, they're invisible, but we all breathe them in as we sit here, and everyone west of the Clarendon incinerator is receiving them. And as to the distance that these things travel, dioxins, these deadly poisons originating in flora have been discovered in our Great Lakes, here in Canada. These particles have been discovered originating in Africa and have been detected in northern England, and particles originating in China have been detected in the United States. So this is internationalisation. There is no barrier to these particles, they travel everywhere.
Thank you again, councillor Sanderson.
Just a clarification, so there's no confusion. The winds are westward to the east?
Westward winds are moving to the east.
Yep, just in your comments.
That's the definition of a westward wind, is one that's moving to the east.
Correct. And I think your slides also indicate that your presentation indicates the dramatic increase in cancer. Are you relating that directly, all of it, to incineration?
No. Incineration plays a substantial role. A study some years ago in Sweden, which is a Scandinavian country and was heavy in incinerators, showed that of the particulate pollution, incinerators can play up to, can contribute up to 38%, which is amazing considering all the cars that are around and all the industries that are around. Pollution can come from many sources, but the main sources, it's simple river fund, but the main sources come from incinerators, motor vehicles, and industrial factories of plants. The reason why we should be concentrating on incinerators is the following. Industry and cars serve a purpose in society. You cannot close down all factories in the society or take off all the cars and motor vehicles off the roads overnight, you will paralyze society. These have to be phased out gradually. We hope to see cars, petrol, gasoline and diesel-driven cars replaced by electric cars, and factories getting their energy from solar energy and wind energy and so forth in the near future, but these have to be phased out gradually, but we cannot stop them overnight because they would paralyze society to do that. Incinerators, on the other hand, do nothing at all other than provide deadly particles which create deadly illnesses. Cancer are focused on cancer, but it's by far not the only illness that these particles produce. So the short answer is no, it's not all caused by incinerators, but the part we could put an end to right now is caused by incinerators.
Go ahead, councillor Sanderson.
Thank you. And from your presentation and the safety levels of carcinogens and toxins and these nanoparticles, I'm implying here that the answer is zero. There is no safe limit, is that correct?
This is 100% correct. That's what I actually said in my presentation. It requires, and this is a point that I think is important to make, people are not really fully aware of this in general. Cancer is a genetic disease, it's caused by damage to the DNA, and it requires one molecule of a carcinogen to cause this damage. Now, not everyone has a clear picture of how big a molecule is, so I'll just mention, they are very, very, very small. If you took a little pinch between your fingers of dioxin, approximately if you took the amount corresponding to the weight of a Canadian dime, a Canadian dime weighs about a gram, and if you took a gram of dioxin, it's a very small amount of this powder, it would contain 200 billion, billion molecules of dioxin. That's two with 20 zeros molecules, that's how small they are. And when I tell the story to people, they often say, "Really? Why haven't we all got cancer?" And the answer is, look at the figures I've just quoted, yeah, we're all getting cancer. 30, 40 years ago, we thought that it's one in 10,000 that people get cancer. Now it's up to one in two, and the predictions are, that's 50% of the population who can have the life expectancy of cancer, and the predictions are it's going to be 60, 70% in 10 years' time and 80, 90 in 10 years after that. We are all getting cancer, and this is a major part of it.
Go ahead, councillor Sanderson.
Thanks not to occupy the floor, but I want to also clarify, relative to cancer, because as you know, we've done a lot of work here, nanoparticles can penetrate the blood-brain barrier, which is a major protection for the neural system, is that correct? And if that is correct, then the younger that neural tissue is, i.e. babies, children, the higher risk. Could you comment?
This is correct. Nanoparticles are, as I indicated, very small development, it's the size of a pinhead. Most of the other particles which are called 2.5 and 10, these 2.5 and 10 refer to micrometers, which is so much bigger, that a nanoparticle is very much smaller. Those bigger particles get stopped in the lungs, so they can be very dangerous to the lung. They can cause lung cancer and cause even a lot of lung diseases. And usually don't get through from the lung into the bloodstream. The nanoparticles can easily get into the bloodstream, and they do, and they can penetrate into the heart, the brain, the kidneys, the liver, all the internal organs. And it is true that younger people are also, that younger people also suffer genetic change in general.
Any other questions, councillor Walles?
Thank you, Warden, through you, thank you, Dr Bletcher, for your very detailed and informative report this morning. But I will say that through all of this and any previous reports that we've done through Northumberland County, there is always an opportunity for public input and for public comment. And for those reasons, as we've seen historically, with respect to landfill, that one of the comments coming forward from the residents of Northumberland County was that they wanted the waste dealt with internally, and that is something that was a recommendation made through the process. So what I do believe is that I would support the recommendation coming forward from Warden, and that for the public comment portion of the EA process as it moves forward, that we need to hear those comments and concerns coming forward again from your group. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Walles. My response to that is the following. I certainly believe that the public needs to be consulted, but I feel it's only reasonable to consult the public when the public has been fully informed. So asking the public whether they're in favour is... So asking the public whether they favor incinerators or not, or implying to them that incinerators can be harmless is a misleading way to consult the public. And similarly, with respect to landfills, I'm very open to the public being consulted about whether they want landfills or whatever else. But I think it is only reasonable that then an information campaign should be mounted to inform the public fully so that they're making informed decisions rather than blind decisions.
And I think just a word in the least.
Counselor Wallace.
Again, thank you. And thank you for that comment. But I want to say respectfully, I don't believe at this point that anyone from Northumberland County is implying one way or the other with regard to incineration. And again, I just feel that the opportunity to bring forward that information comes at a different opportunity, and that is through the process. And that's why I believe that everything should be left on the table. And the support that we have here is somewhat indicative of the voice that you're bringing with you. So I appreciate that very much.
Counselor Rettle, you're next.
Thank you very much. I just want to be clear again because we've talked about so many themes here. What's the ask? Just want to be clear, what's the ask is? What is it you're asking us specifically?
I would like to see incinerators banned not only in this county, in this province, in this country, and all wide.
But what is it that Northumberland County can do? Because we certainly can't do that.
I'm not familiar with what the realities are. I would have thought that the county can do that.
No. We certainly can't ban incinerators in the world, in the province, in the country.
The county, I thought the county council could ban incinerators within the county. That might be my impression.
So I think my colleague Mayor Wallace has stated that the process for that is jury the environmental assessment. If we were to ban, and I wonder if we'd be clear about this because having gone through the most controversial environmental assessment that's been going on for seven years in Northumberland County, if we were to say now that we ban incinerators here, there would never be an environmental assessment that would be successful one way or the other. To start off with, it'd be immoral and it would certainly be illegal against the Environmental Assessment Act. I think there's a lot of great information in your presentation, most of which I agree with. And the only parts I don't agree with is because there's no scientific evidence-based studies one way or another that come to a firm conclusion. Because there are many studies that'll say one thing and there's as many studies that will oppose what's already been stated. So I think it's quite accurate that your presentation is valuable and needs to be put into the environmental assessment, which is the lawful public process for anything that the municipal government does on a scale like this. So your presentation is valuable, but it's a little earlier, I would say at this point. I've been an advocate for recycling and responsible waste management as long as I've been on this council and before. It was a project of my father, recycling in Northumberland County, started in the town of Galloway and grew to what it is today. And as far as I'm concerned, we're 30 years behind what he wanted to achieve then. And including the one proposal that I put forward five years ago in front of the previous council at this table was to do one simple thing by banning plastic shopping bags. And that decision was made against my proposal while I was laying on a table having surgery. So I understand the frustration of a lot of people of where we're going with waste and with recycling. But I would like one person in this room to put up their hand if they're prepared to have a new landfill beside their home. Because we're doing everything we can. We're spending millions of dollars on our last remaining landfill site to make it as safe as possible, even excavating the entire site and putting liners underneath it. But I've yet to find someone who wants to live next door to it. So it's got to be more than just urinism because people are going to have to eventually make up their mind. We've got people, as many people objecting to wind and solar power generating stations as there are that who are advocating for it. We're going to have to make our mind up as a society what we're willing to sacrifice and what we're willing to live with. We just can't keep saying no. I think you ultimately stated that society would come to a grinding halt if we were to ban certain products and energy products like gasoline and diesel. And with that, I think that information needs to be cleared to the public and they need their opportunity to input into an environmental process and/or whatever processes are used to make decisions. And I can tell you that the one environmental assessment that's been going on in Trent Hills, which is a county project now for seven years, because people opposed it and filled the environmental assessment with so much misinformation that when the Ministry of Environment asked the county to step back and redo certain parts of it, and it still came out to the same conclusion, it cost this county an additional $700,000. So I think it's important that when people speak, they speak factually and that their participation is wisely part of the process and not just going out and saying things that are either just outright lies or they're just an effort to stall a process or to stop a process. We all know we're going to have to do something with waste and soon our last remaining landfill site has a sunset and it's coming quickly. So with that, I'll stop. Northumberland County is no different than lots of other areas. Look at the opposition there was to a gravel bed in this county. Massive, massive opposition to a measly gravel bed. And yet where are we going to get our aggregates from if we stop producing, getting them from and around? So I think the process is coming. I look forward to seeing your presentation as part of that process. I think I said, I think there's lots of valuable information in there. And through the efforts of corrupt corporations and governments, sure, cancer has become what it is today. And the numbers one and two may be incorrect as well. There's lots of this that are on our stack along. And I'm one of them. It's coming from somewhere, whether it's environmental conditions or it's coming from somewhere. It's certainly coming.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Millen, are there any other comments, questions?
May I respond to that, please?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Counselor McMillan. I want to express my great respect for the contributions you and from what you're telling me your father have made to this issue. And they are obviously of great importance. With respect to the scientific facts that I presented, I can assure you that all the facts I presented are authenticated, correct scientific facts. I've checked them all. I know that there are debates in science occasionally, but I have put forward facts that are entirely authenticated and double-checked. And I do understand that there is a provincial government here that controls what happens and what municipalities and counties can do. And my ultimate objective has been to get the message to the provincial level. And I'm hoping that still can be done. And I guess a part of what the intention was with my presentation here has been is to have attempted to get the county council's support for the attempt to bring this to the Minister of Environment's attention in Toronto. Thank you.
Just a quick follow-up, Mr. Wiz.
Go ahead.
I would imagine what's going on in Port Hope right now was what's been buried below the ground. So I'll just throw that out there. I'm not sure that landfill is still the way forward and technologies are evolving every day.
Thank you very much, again, Dr. Bledcher. As I said, if you collect any further information you may collect between now and 2017, you should put together, in addition to what you presented here today, for the environmental assessment process. And I guarantee you, that will become a matter of public record. The information you want to use to educate the public will be there for the public to read to get educated. And that will actually have the most impact that you could have in Northumberland County. So please, thank you very much for your presentation. Please leave your contact information with us and we'll make sure you are engaged.
Just a word, I just have one other thought.
Yes.
It's common for people from the public to sit on environmental assessment committees.